One second.
Yes.
Speak into the mic if you can. Okay.
My name is Aurora Wensley. I am the owner and resident of 207 Riverview Road in Swarthmore. I sent members of council a letter on Friday. I realize it was a short turnaround and we had quite a bit of excitement, so you may or may not have had a chance to read it. I won't read it all to you, but I would like to state the purpose of the letter and I'm happy to answer any questions as well. So I wrote the letter really to clarify any factual misunderstandings about my property. And as you may be aware, there was a zoning hearing board application that I put in regarding the use of the additional living area that's above the detached garage that was built and permitted in 1978 for the use of family. So the letter really, I tried to succinctly as I could communicate both what I believe is a legal justification of the continued use of that additional living area that includes two bedrooms, a bathroom, a kitchen, laundry hookups, four up to two roomers, boarders, or lodgers as defined as family under Borough Dunning Code, but also the spirit of the justification, which is that I am a homeowner who chose Swarthmore as the place to raise my children and I care deeply about the community and I tried at every step to do the right thing in terms of both being law-abiding and being a good neighbor. And I think the letter lays out that fairly clearly. I'm happy to give more details if you feel it's appropriate or to sort of pause there and let you read the letter and either ask, answer questions, or come back to it at a future meeting. It was, the last thing I'll say is it was very difficult to read in the cover page of the Swarthmorean last month some of the statements that were made by my neighbors, neighbors who have consistently refused any dialogue with me or with other, several other people who've tried to engage in more neighborly communication and conversation about the use of that space and my use of that space. And I would love to not have to continue to have this conversation and to be able to continue to do what I've been doing, which actually my two lodgers who I consider part of my extended community and my family are here and they're happy to also answer any questions and thoughts of use too. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to address council this time? If not, I'm going to call the hot yes, please.
My name is Seth Culden. I also live at 207 Riverview Road. That's my partner, Aurora Wensley. I wanted to, I don't really have much to add, but she hasn't comprehensively and articulately stated that hospitality and taking care of the household is something that we take very seriously and it is the sort of part of my entire life and career. And that many times on record in this building, people have stated that this was not a concern of ours. And I just, the one thing that I want to tell you is that I care deeply about the people who live with me, around me, and nearby, and I am not cavalier in sharing my home with anyone. And I don't really have that much else to say, except that I hope for a peaceful and amicable relationship going forward once all this is hopefully quickly resolved. Thank you for your time. I apologize for being so much of everybody's.
Thank you. Anyone else here to address council? If not, oh yes, okay.
Hi, I'm Kayla Long. Hi.
Can you speak your name, I'm sorry?
C.A.E.L.A. and then L. I mean, I just want to say hi and introduce myself because you know Aurora has been great and we left our names out of everything for our sake. I went to Swarthmore, graduated in 2016. I now work at CHOC. So you know, I'm fingerprinted certified to be around children in case that's a concern for anyone. And I really want to be part of this community. There's a reason I chose to live in Swarthmore and not live in the city. Part of it is because I have very bad PTSD and the city doesn't work for me and that's also why it's been so great for Aurora and Seth to open up their space to us because we both, these years have been very hard for us. We both have health issues. And to live in like a safe space where like we know if we need anything, we can call Seth or Aurora like at any hour. And like, you know, if people have kids and like want to learn how to play soccer or lacrosse, they can hit me up. Like I want to like teach and coach for a while when I was at Swarthmore, you know, like, I don't know, just like we really want to be part of this community and like grateful that by allowing us to like stay and like part of their property, like we're able to like be here. Because I don't know like where I'd be if I didn't have a place to stay here right now. So just want to say that we really appreciate and appreciate all your time also. So thanks, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? I'm going to count to three. Two, three. All right. I'll bring the public comment session to a close, or at least this segment of it. And I think, I just have a couple things I want to say. First of all, I want to thank the Borough Police Department, members of the Borough Fire Company, Jane Billings, all the Borough staff and employees for all the hard work they put into dealing with, I guess it's Riley, is that what we're calling it? The bomb cyclone Riley, or whatever the right name is. Obviously, it's affected everyone in the borough, some more than others, I'm sorry.
Michael has no power here.
I'm sorry, Michael. But, that's right, there's still some folks in the borough who don't have power and obviously PICO is, PICO's working very hard on that. And I suppose I, you know, I should extend the borough's thanks to PICO as well, but really the police department, the volunteers, the employees of the fire company, and all of the Borough staff and employees, and especially Jane, you know, really deserve our thanks for putting in a lot of time and effort. I guess the only other thing I want to say is that while there may be some lessons learned from this latest event, which by the way, of course, is totally outside of the borough's control or anyone's control for that matter, I think that in due course, the appropriate committees and council may consider some of those questions and we may have some discussion, in particular the Public Safety Committee and with respect to Communications, General Government Committee. And that's about all I've got to say about that, and I'm going to turn things over to Lauren to report on the environment.
Great, thanks, David. Before we get to our ordinance 1083, I wanted to say that the Environmental Advisory Council now has a Facebook page. It is actually titled the Swarthmore Environmental Advisory Council. And so you can search for that and like it and follow it. And the newly formed Education Committee is putting out some articles in the Swarthmorean in the somewhat near future, one on the spotted lantern fly and one on the importance of mulch and hinting to buy some of the borough mulch because we heard that people aren't buying as much as they used to. And then, this is, this is really great, there's going to be an event called, where is it? I just had it. No, no, it's about water and it's about drinking water in Swarthmore and it's going to be Tuesday, March 13th at seven o'clock in the community room. And this was started by a long conversation on Nextdoor about people who had a lot of questions about, you know, how safe is the drinking water, you know, what good is a filter and that kind of technical. And so Tracy Buvette is going to be, you know, answering some questions that day and he lives in Swarthmore, he's an environmental consultant, and it will be an important educational time. And that's March 13th. And then we have the ordinance, ordinance 1083, just some kind of minor details about membership on EAC and some rules that I think you've seen, you know, you've seen that and we'll be voting on it next week. Are there any questions this week about it? Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Lauren.
And we will be meeting March 15th.
That's the committee meeting.
Yes, the committee, yeah.
The ads of March?
Yes.
Mike, finance?
Nothing tonight, we will not be meeting this month.
No meeting this month?
Correct.
Sarah, General Government.
Yeah, hi. So to start with, we want to talk about the parking meter situation. As we talked about in previous meetings, we, the committee's been working on ways that we can ease the burden of residents and merchants in regards to parking in the borough. And we had a discussion at the last committee meeting, and we found that the 30-minute parking meters that are in town are mostly in use to ensure that people don't park in the spaces the entire day. And so to relieve the burden of paying the meter for quick in-and-out stops, we're working on a plan to replace the 30-minute meters with meters that have some push buttons for free time, like 15 minutes of free time to go in and park. And so Jane ran the numbers for us and did a lot of good searching for the best deal. And should I go through some of those numbers now? It's pretty quick.
Sure.
All right, so there are 18 30-minute meters and they're distributed throughout the town. There's like four on Park, three on Lafayette, three on Rutgers by the post office, three on Lincoln by the co-op, et cetera. And then, so that's how many meters are the 30-minute meters. And then we could replace the meter as Jane brought in the sample last time with ones that would just fit right on, so you'd take the old top part off and put the new top part on. And our guy, Rob, our guy from the Public Works Department, would like to actually keep the old 30-minute meters if we do this to replace some of the ones that need replacing anyway, because some aren't working so well. And so he was going to have to get some replacements anyway this year. And so with no trade-in, we would just get the meters. It would be $80 per meter, so the total cost would be $1,440 plus shipping fee. And our budget annually for meter maintenance is $3,000. So that's less than half of our budget for meter maintenance in general, plus we have the ones that we are replacing to use to replace the ones that aren't working so well. So the numbers sounded to me, I'm not quite sure what the next step is on this, except the committee, we're pretty much in agreement that this is the direction we would like to go. So is there any discussion yet?
Is that, is that with the trade-in for the meters we have now, or that's just a straight buy?
No, we get two meters, they're $80.
So if it doesn't work out, we could?
Exactly.
Yeah.
We don't even ask anything, it's small enough.
No, 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 it was just sort of an informational thing, if anybody has any ideas why it's a bad idea that maybe we haven't thought of. This is sort of to eliminate the people who are at the post office, the cleaners, the co-op, who say, "I just ran in for 10 minutes." Of course, the meter man has no way of knowing that how long we've been there, but at least then you sort of get rid of the argument, "I could have just gone to, you know, the dry cleaners that's down on 320," or something like that, that they are getting the benefit of some free parking. I have no idea what the revenue would be, I mean, it's probably, yeah, it should be relatively small.
I have one question. So if, I just noticed looking at the sample meter, it says, "Press for free time when meter is at zero." What happens if the meter is like five minutes?
I don't think it would work, actually, because I think it's, yeah, I think it has to be at zero. And then, did we say 15, because we were thinking that 10 might be, well, it's really up here.
I've only seen 10.
You've seen 10?
I forget where that is, if it's in Wayne or something.
The ones I know are in Wayne, are those 10?
I've only seen 10, but.
And the nice thing about 10, and we don't care, they're going to program them however you say, the nice thing about 10 is it's a little more irritating to, I mean, if somebody was going to go out and keep trying to get free time, 10 minutes would probably get pretty old pretty fast. And it's certainly enough time to do usually the post office, certainly the dry cleaners or something like that. So we can do 10 or?
We could always do 12 around the co-op.
We could, we could do separate, we could do different types.
You can always add time right away, I believe, right? Like you can, you can just add 10 minutes onto, if you are going to do 30 minutes, you can just add 10 minutes first and then add the?
I don't think so.
You have to ask it zero. That's the requirement.
Ask it zero.
But wait, wait, listen. You have to be at zero to put the 10 cents on, but then you can put quarters in.
I don't, I don't know that. I would be surprised if you could do that, but I will find out. That's what other people have seen, these are standard meters.
Have the merchants had any commentary on this? So we spoke with, well, Anita, you know, spoke with the people at the co-op and asked about times when that would be good and actually asked about, didn't she ask about the amount of time, or was that just when we were talking about enforcement time?
Yeah, I think, yeah, this was sort of being weighed against the idea of stopping enforcement at 3:00 in the afternoon, which the merchants didn't seem to think would be it, as much, as of much value.
I mean, when I've spoken with merchants just anecdotally, they've often mentioned the parking meters as being an issue for the in-and-out shopper, the person who just needs to come in for a second. And so, I mean, that's where the idea came from. The exact, going to them with this idea, I don't think we've done that formally.
Sounds good.
Does the committee have a recommendation on 10 versus 15 minutes? Or 12?
Or we could do, you're thinking of 15 of the ones places to go on?
If you get in line as a co-op, you definitely take more than 10 minutes.
We don't need any, any line people.
So, I mean, if it's okay with everyone else, I think we could probably lead that up to?
Sure, that's, you know, discuss it. I'm not so sorry, sir. Or do you mind? It was your idea. Okay, that's, that's fair.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you. And then as for the, moving on to the rest of the committee report right now. Okay, so the last committee meeting, we moved to, we decided to move the permit applications forward for several events for the year. Big ones are the farmer's market starting May 5th to run for the whole season, and then the two makers markets that are going to be in the spring and the fall, so I don't have the exact dates with me right now. We also moved the Rotary Club's Fun Fair application forward. It's going to be on May 30th, May 20th this year, which is two weeks later than usual. They've had some unfortunate weather recently, so they're hoping, moving it two weeks will cure that problem. And then we reviewed the co-op's application for the Food Truckathon for, set for April 20th. It's actually, has it been?
It's not been resubmitted, actually, now.
Yeah, we should remind them that that needs to happen. So they just, they requested something when they were there at the application, at the committee meeting that was different than that was on the application. So we, they want to add some more trucks. And so we told them to, that they could, you know, read you the application, but it's seeming like it's, the changes are acceptable to the businesses and public safety and everything like that, so that should move forward. We also, two of the other things we did, we heard from some college students and community members about concerns about Swarthmore College student voting. And we're going to continue that conversation actually at the next meeting. So there's that. And then we also began a conversation about social media and communications and how the borough can kind of push information out there. It's also a long conversation that's going to last until next meeting again. And we'll probably include some, something about communication during emergencies and disasters and things like that that we touched on. So we are going to obviously be meeting next month. It's always the third Monday, so.
What's that date?
19th. Thank you. Be on the 19th, 7:30 here.
Thank you, Sarah. Betsy, Planning and Zoning?
The Planning Commission met on February 21st and they're continuing to discuss this issue of ADUs and cohousing with respect to the aging in place recommendations. They're, they're still kind of, they got mired a little bit in sort of legal talk about what a co-op is and how it needs to be treated and some issues around how to define parking. They also approved a sewer letter for Jamie.
Well, must we hope.
Yeah, yeah, so they seem to be a little bit of a holding pattern right now. Moving on to the committee report, the Planning and Zoning Committee met on February 22nd and one of the things that we talked about was the holding pattern that the Planning Commission's in, in some ways that we might try to help kind of encourage them along. They originally, they were very close to having some language around ADUs and we have some other ideas about some stuff that's already in the code that, you know, we might try to help them utilize differently to get a little more action. There was some public comment at the Planning and Zoning Committee concerning the Riverview issue and?
Excuse me, which Riverview issue?
Oh, sorry, the issue, yeah. The original Riverview issue, that 207 Riverview.
207.
Yeah, I understand, there have been some Riverview issues since then. But yeah, and then we also had an executive session. And we will meet again this month on the 22nd.
Thanks, Betsy. Mary, Policy?
The Public Safety Committee did meet last month and primarily we talked with Brian Craig about the latest in the police testing process. And I believe the next phase was the oral examination that would be given by three examiners. And the Civil Service Commission met here earlier this evening because I think they had to pass a resolution to appoint the three examiners before they can give that test, and that was done this evening. I don't have a date for when that test will be. Then I wanted to remind people that we are still looking for a new alternate for the Civil Service Commission. We would like to get that if we could because, you know, it's only a three-person commission, so if someone's absent, we need that alternate. We will be meeting this month in this room at, on March 20th at 7:30 PM.
Thanks, Mary. Ross, Public Works?
Public Works met and we will be meeting again on our usual fourth Thursday in the morning, that'll be March 22nd. And so we've had, we will have had three meetings this month, January, February, and March about the issue of the sewers in town. And I think it was a really good, informative meeting. We had the Borough Engineer come, Joe Master Renardo, and he gave us a very thorough description of the sewer system. The Borough Manager and the roles of the Public Works Department have done a great job of managing that system. It's an old system. It's passed its useful life in a lot of ways, so it needs constant monitoring and it requires constant repair. And it's the second largest budget item for the town behind the police. So it's good information that we're getting about this system. Jane and the engineer presented us with the updated priority repair list. And so the borough does look at this list and prioritizes high, medium, and low. And so we'll be doing that, so that's important. One of the main topics of discussion for all three months is the possibility of considering what's called a sewer lateral ordinance. So this would be an ordinance that governs, that governs the sewer connection from the house to the street. And we have, really Jane has helped us tremendously by collecting the ordinances from surrounding communities, which we've been reviewing, Nether Providence, Rose Valley, both have ordinances on this, Edgemont, Middletown, O'Hara, Pendel, Concord. So we've been going through all the details of these ordinances. And we're really in the education phase right now. So the main importance is that, I think, a fact that I wasn't aware of that was very helpful, Joe put up like a picture of Park Avenue and showed that the length of the sewer on Park Avenue that we think about, the public sewer in the street, the connections from the houses is equal in length to the sewer that's in the street. So we have just as much sewer in the borough connecting the houses to the street in terms of length as we do that's in the streets. So the idea is that we need to consider appropriate ordinances to possibly inspect those at time of sale to make sure that they're connected, so that they're not leaking sewage, which is a health issue and a public safety issue, and so that they're also not absorbing water into the system, which overburns the system with too much water. So we are going to have, we had Joe and Panomei Associates present. This next meeting, we're going to have John Galligan, who's the president of the Pennsylvania Plumbing Contractors Association, Dave Grady, who's the assistant manager of Nether Providence, and Catherine Ricardo, who's the manager from Edgemont Township, who come in and talk with us about implementation, what they found out about implementation, things that you need to think about if you're implementing such an ordinance. So that's moving forward and then at some point when we finish our education work for report to all of you on that. Panomei also presented on a new software and maintenance program for the streets, for the pavement in the streets. And it was very impressive, I think the committee members were very impressed with it. Basically, kind of like Google does, they send a car through the borough with a camera on it with a GIS mapping setup, and they generate photographs and maps and data, and they actually have an algorithm that analyzes the state of the surface of the road. And this would permit us to have a very good comprehensive view of the state of our roads. It would help very much in judging which ones are worse than others and where we should prioritize the repairs. And also allow us to understand the state of the asset itself, our roads. So they've made a proposal on that. I think Jane was waiting for more information.
Did I set out, I set out a little one-hit blog?
Yeah, you did.
I'll copy it.
Right.
It's, it will probably result, if we do it, it was like $5,000 cost, I think. It's set us a little bit over probably on our engineering budget, but I think if you looked at it long-term, it would probably save some, because it comes up with cost estimates. So it will probably save some engineering fees in the future because they would be able to do a whole bunch of work now that they wouldn't then have to repeat. So I was really enthused, I think, because it's a little over, it might be nice to get a record with council that you approved it. Not tonight, next week is fine. Again, it's not really an extraordinary expense, it's certainly nothing that needs to be bid or anything like that, but I thought it was, it's just, it's hard. Those of you who've done this, who've done the, when I've asked you to go out and look at the roads, they also have to look alike after a while and everything looks terrible and it becomes really hard to do the high, medium, and low. So this hopefully will be a little helpful.
It would be a much more objective.
It would be a much more objective system than simply saying, hey, anybody go out ride around and if you see a, you know, a bad spot, tell us. I mean, versus an actual...
Yeah.
So, that was very good, and just, I don't know if this is appropriate for report, Jane, but you mentioned about the grant on recycling containers?
Right, right. There's the two grants, one that we just submitted, and you're welcome to, or I can talk about it.
What did you talk about that?
So, we submitted on February 28th a grant, it's a $300,000 grant for a $375,000 program of sewer repair, actually using the list that Ross, I think, sent to everybody, and a lot of lining work, some replacement work, and so, many thanks to Leanne Hoover-Bernigie and to our Senator, wait, you're not right now, McGarrett, who both wrote letters on our behalf within an hour of being asked, so many thanks to them. So, that grant was submitted in a timely manner. We hope that we'll hear on it soon. It's from the Department of Community and Economic Development. The other grant that we will apply for is due in April, and it's a recycling grant through, which we've gotten many, many before, and we're going to put in, I can't remember if we mentioned this now or in committee, for a new piece of equipment that would collect leaves in a self-contained unit so we wouldn't run up against this problem of having to disconnect all the machinery when it's, the weather gets back, so we have it ready for snow, which may, would mean that if the weather were good in January or February or even March or April, we could go out with this truck and do some supplemental leaf collections, which I think people would really, really appreciate. They're very expensive pieces of machine, and I think it's about $175,000, but the Department of, the DDP covers 90% of the cost, and we probably wouldn't buy it until we knew that we got the grant. And then, along with that, we're going to get some more recycling containers because we've been out for quite a while. DDP used to fund them, they didn't for about 10 years, now they're funding them again. So, I'll have some extras when people move in, and I guess people who move out keep them as souvenirs. Although, to be honest, most people do leave them. We don't have a lot of people who move in without them. And then, I probably remember last year's council applied, gave custody approval to buy a new pickup truck, and since some of that is used for recycling, we'll try and get a little bit of that reimbursed as well. So, those will be our three big ticket items. Nether Providence is applying for the same thing, so we're going to keep it out for money.
Thank you, Jane. You do a great job of looking out there to see ways we can be frugal and get these things paid for through grants, which is wonderful. So, anybody who's interested in learning more about the sewer system, March 22 at 8:30 in the morning. That's my report.
Thanks, Ross. Just one question. How old is this sewer system?
You know, I reading through that three-inch report you gave me, I think it was maybe completed in the 50s.
Oh, most of it is, was pretty much constructed whenever your house was constructed.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. There has been no wholesale replacement of the sewer system. So, unless there's been a break or some other problem, it is still the original 10- or 12-inch, but mostly, sorry, 8- or 10-inch terracotta pipe, four-foot lengths in the street, broken and leaking.
Yes, it's not steel or concrete pipe.
Yeah, there's been no replacement.
It's clay sections of pipe.
Right, and some of that terracotta pipe lasts a long time. Look at the terracotta, terracotta waters. They're really old. But, yeah, for most places in the borough, the sewers are as old as the houses that they are serving.
Wow, okay.
And so are the laterals.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks, Ross. Any other, any other business? For council, that is. If not, oh, Mary, go ahead.
Nope. I was actually, back to the recent events with the storm in Pico. Do we ever do anything like send a thank you letter? I don't know if there's even a place to send that, but...
To Pico?
Yeah.
Actually, I have. That is a great idea. Our represent, we have, the way Pico works is usually the day after the storm has sort of subsided, they start to have conference calls with the managers. So, we've now had three. We had two on, no, one on Saturday, two on Saturday, one on Sunday, and one today, all at 2:00. And they invite the managers to participate. And then, at the same time, they give you the name of your regional manager, and ours was a guy for years named Ralph Brown, who retired last year, so this is the first indoctrination by fire of our new guy. But after the last storm, and these people pick up the phone and tell you things you don't want to hear, like, I heard at 4:00 today, we still have 494 people out. That's about a third of the borough. That is not good news. And yet, they're always there. So, yeah, I did send a thank you letter, and I would be happy to do one on behalf of borough council. This guy's done a great job. And they have not been successful, but, you know, as a rep, you just want to hear what's going on. And I think people have been telling me they've been getting pretty good ideas when their service is going to be connected. Again, it's not good news, but Pico feels, I mean, they said on one of the calls, we would rather be honest with people than, than not, and have them expect to be back on and have it not have it. I think their crews did not get here nearly as quickly as they thought they could, and they've been pretty hampered by that. And for people who don't know, the college is still running on battery power, on generators. They have not been connected. Springfield got hit pretty hard, and there's a big 33KV line. It may be actually that tree that's down at Wallen, I'm not quite sure, but, so, so I'm happy to send it.
But they've been working.
Yeah, they, the guys, they've been working, and, yeah.
I mean, I'd like to, I, you know, I'd be another visitor before Malia, I'd like to send a thank you.
Sure. So, Jane, if you're prepared a letter for council?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll be happy to sign it after midnight Wednesday.
Right. You know, it doesn't have to be you, Mary.
I will, I will abstain.
You should send thanks in advance.
But along those same lines, another thing that's been weighing on my mind is the stuff that's going on around gun control, and from what I understand, there's not much we can do other than the symbolic, but I know that there is a walkout planned in March at the high school, possibly the middle school, and I'm pretty sure the school board and the principals are on board, but I thought, you know, we could also send a letter just, you know, encouraging them to support the activism by the students or something like that.
Well, I mean, if, if you'd like to prepare a letter for council to consider, then we can, we can consider it. Again, it would be more, what's the right word, sort of oratory or supportive or something, you know, but, yeah, whatever. Yeah, but, but, you know, certainly council will consider a letter if you want to address it.
Okay, does that process, all right. Thank you.
Any other business with council? If not, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, David. Just wanted to talk about the co-op real quick. They had, basically had a huge disaster on their hands. It was gratifying that Jane did really yeoman's work in getting them a dumpster and getting things kind of in line for them to kind of move forward, getting the health inspector there to do the inspecting she needed to do and everything else. It was very gratifying for me to see volunteers from the community who showed up to help them clean out shelves and clean out stuff, which was a good thing. My understanding is that they're going to be also looking for help when they actually get new product in and needs to actually stock the shelves, so they're actually going to be putting out a plea for people to, to help out with that. One other story I wanted to highlight from, from the recent storm was that we had got a call on Saturday from the Strathaven Conventium, and there's a lot of people who live in that building, a lot of people who are older and certainly have other places to go, and they were concerned about the lack of heat because they didn't have electricity and everything else. We reached out to the college, and the college prepared a space, I think Bob Tollam was, which was warm and had places to sit and chairs and everything else. I think the first four people from the condos went over and were given food by the college, which was really nice, and about 15 minutes later, the power came on. Strathaven, so that's, you know, the way these things go sometimes, but it was, I think as we move forward and we start to have these discussions about how we can be not blindsided by something, I think this was a really, this is the worst storm I can remember in terms of just how quickly it hit and how much of it was sort of a surprise. And we were sort of caught off guard, I think, a little bit. Took the county a long time to kind of figure out where their warming centers were going to be. Normally, in that situation, that's what happens is if the county finds these places, because to actually do a warming center is complicated, you know, in terms of who has to staff it and who needs to, people need to be fed and all these other kinds of things. It's not, it's not as easy as just kind of like, you know, opening up a space for people kind of thing. And in the past, we, I know the borough has used SRS and actually Borough Hall and other times, both of those were out of power as well, so the issues weren't really good for us on, on that side. The last thing I wanted to point out was that next month in April, we're going to try a borough cleanup day where we get people to actually come out. Is that being scheduled, is it, I think it's, I think it's the 22nd? Was it?
Isn't it going to be on Earth Day?
Earth Day, the 22nd, I think.
Yeah.
And the idea is to get people to come out and volunteer and do like a really thorough spruce-up of everything from cleaning out sewer drains and picking up trash and some other kinds of things. I've seen this work really well in other places, and there's actually, the organization is trying to push this across all of that's available to people, so I think we can actually get trash bags and things like that from building for the...
Well, David, wait a second.
It's a Sunday, I believe. Earth Day.
Got it.
And, you know, it's, I hope that the power comes on quick, Mary. That's for the, everybody in the borough is still out, and we're a resilient group here in Swatmore, and we respond to these things very well, I think. As soon as this co-op gets restocked, let's do some shopping.
Okay. But don't shop yet.
When they get restored?
No, 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 don't shop yet because there's a storm coming Wednesday, and they are supporting to the county, and another storm coming on Monday.
Thank you, Jane.
But continually in small parts.
The co-op's open though for now.
Yeah.
I just want that to inform a lot of people.
I would think the rest is for the end, right, for all your spoiling ahead. Right. I'm now going to open the second public comment period, which we have at work session, so if there's anyone that would care to address council now, please come forward, state your name and address.
Hello, I'm James Verity. I'm at 401 Brighton Avenue, and I was reminded that there was a council meeting tonight by my friends on Riverview Avenue who had all this going on, so I decided to come and support it then. Thanks, everybody, for your service and that. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Anyone else here to address council? If not, I'm going to call the second public comment period to close. Jane?
I just have a couple of things. I already gave you that 494 people are still out in the borough. We saw four road closures that I think might be open tonight. Lyndon gave one of these to everybody about the senior homeless fair and certainly encouraged everybody to go, so I told him that I would mention that, and we would be able to do that to Ms. Katie. That would be great. The other thing that I have to report, the borough has been selected by the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission. I got an email earlier in Jan, in February saying that the DVRPC is working with Delaware County, looking at current and potential future bike-to-transit trip making. They want to better understand habits and preferences of transit users related to biking, as well as identify and prioritize improvements that can be made to make biking to transit a more effective choice. So, they had picked seven candidate stations, including us, and we were interested to write back, so I wrote back and said that I was interested, and I'm sure our council president, who bikes to work himself, would be extremely interested. So, today, they wrote back and said that they were excited to have us participate in the project. They'll be doing surveys at the train station, trying to find, look, they're going to wait till the weather's a little bit better, and they're going to try and figure out what would make more people ride their bikes to the Swatmore train station, and hopefully everywhere else. Lansdowne was also selected. I'm like, God, it's always us in Lansdowne. And Norwood. So, those are the three stations in Delaware County that they picked. Again, they're working with the, with the county, so if you're at the train station, they may come and ask you a few questions. I think we'll have a chance to look at the survey before it goes out. I'll be happy to share it with people, so I thought that was kind of fun. They actually said something interesting. They do a survey, they take the license numbers of the cars that park in the stations and find out where they're coming from, so they know how far people are traveling by car to get to your station. So, I thought that was kind of interesting.
Nice to hear that.
Yeah, that would be, that would be interesting to get that data. I think that's, it's always a little creepy. I agree. But I'm the janitor, so, yeah, I thought that was interesting. And I would be very surprised if we didn't find out that most people are coming from areas where they probably, if there was a safe way to get there, and that might be what they find out, is that people, for instance, may be coming from Morton or Wallingford or don't, or media don't feel that there's a safe way to get here and will park their bikes once they get here. So, I think their plan is if they find that to be the case, to somehow rectify that situation, so that'll be fun.
That would be great.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Thanks, Jane.
We filed to borough's brief in a headstrong appeal last week. The headstrong itself has an extension, so that will not be filed in brief for a few more weeks. And after that, I don't know if oral argument will follow or not, but I'll keep you posted. Thanks, Bob, appreciate that. All right, at this time, I, I'd like to adjourn from our public session here, and I'm going to call an executive session to discuss some personnel and legal matters, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
So...
Is there a second?
Second.
On the paper?
All right.
Or adjourn.